Shoot, I think I misread the video.
Good evening. I call to order this regular joint meeting of the Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. I'm Bonnie Duffy. I am the Chair for the County. Your Lori Lucky is here for the Chairman for the City. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cell phones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehaha county dot org site for viewing by the general public. The two Planning Commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural areas surrounding the city. This area is displayed on the screen. When this joint hearing is completed, the Joint Sioux Falls and County Planning Commission will adjourn and the next regular business meeting will begin to consider items beyond the joint zoning jurisdiction with Sioux Falls. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Monday, November 4th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission and City Council for a joint hearing on Tuesday, November 26th on or after 5:00 PM. The meeting is held in the Carnegie Town Hall at 235 West 10th Street. Action taking on the rezoning application during the public hearing tonight is a recommendation that will be forwarded to the County Commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, November 26th at or after 5:00 PM. Joint meetings of the County Commission and City Council are held in the Carnegie Town Hall at 235 West 10th Street. At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the Commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the August 26th meeting are included in the consent agenda. Does any Planning Commission member wish to have any item removed for discussion? Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff or the audience. If any member of the staff or the audience would like to be heard on the item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the Commission later in the meeting. Any other items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of August 26th, 2019. Item number two is conditional use permit 19-46 to make three building eligibilities available for use on the property legally described as a north half, the southwest quarter, the southwest quarter, Section 28, Township 101 North, Range 48 West, and lots 1 through 4 of Calvert Heights addition in the southwest quarter, southwest quarter, Section 28, Township 101 North, Range 48 West. The petitioner is Ryan Brower. The property owner is Bernie Shock. Location is 3000 South George Street, and that is located approximately one mile east of Sioux Falls. Okay, we will take item number two and remove that to the regular agenda and we'll give you time to speak for that item. The only other item on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes of August 26th, 2019.
I'll second that.
A motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes of August 26th on the county side. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Look for motion approval.
Move for approval of the remaining consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and a seconding discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Okay, so item number two is removed to the regular agenda.
Good evening. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Item number two is conditional use permit to make three building eligibilities available for use on the subject property. So just for a quick explanation, Minnehaha County has density zoning which generally allows one building eligibility for every 40 acres of land. There's a time area between when 1979 and 1988 where densities, before density zoning became active, that if a parcel was platted during that time, it was required to have a conditional use permit to make the building eligibility available for use. And hence, this petitioner would like to make one of those building eligibilities, or three of those building eligibilities, available for use on this property. The site is located in already heavily subdivided property, or area that's mostly built out. Two of the lots in the property, I wonder if I have a... The subdivision into four different lots. One of the lots already has a house on it. And if I can bring my mouse to it, it would be right about there. And then the other three lots would be available for building. Two of the properties are accessible by South River Bluff Road, and the other one that needs to be improved to meet the lots. The other two are accessible through South George Street in the middle of the subdivision. And some of that would be along the street in easements on property. As this is a conditional use permit, I'll read off some of the conditional use permit criteria to be considered. The criteria number one, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of property and surrounding area for the uses already permitted and upon property values within the surrounding area. The surrounding area is rural residential properties with some agricultural land. There may be some additional traffic along River Bluff Road, but in general, it meets the general area, the character of the area. Number two, that the effect upon normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses parameter in the area. The area has many rural residential acreages that are already built. Few lots have available eligibilities remaining, and which will likely limits the future development until annexation and extension of utilities. Number three, the utilities and access roads, drainage, and our other necessary facilities are provided. The petitioner will have to be required to extend any utilities for future dwellings. And this is where there might be some issue with River Bluff Road because River Bluff Road is unimproved beyond this last dwelling of this part of the property, or just to the north of the property. The petitioner will have to work with Split Rock Township to figure out how to extend that road and to meet up with a driveway, a future driveway. For both the immediate dwelling that the petitioner wants to build, and then there's another lot down here that he would need to extend a driveway to. Number four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. Off-street parking will be met at the time the single-family dwelling is built. Number five, that measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting inclusive of the light of signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The proposed available eligibilities should not create any nuisances, and the future property owners will have to abide by the public nuisance ordinance. And number six, the health, safety, general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. Public health, safety, and general welfare will not be negatively harmed by the proposed request. And Vision 2035 comprehensive plan includes this area in the transition area for a future land use plan. This transition area exists of residential areas and are expected to be maintained, and proposed use will not create any new building eligibilities. Staff does recommend approval of conditional use permit number 1946 with two conditions. A right-to-farm notice covenant shall be placed on each deed prior to issuance of building permits for single-family dwellings, and that a driveway or culvert permit shall be obtained from Split Rock Township prior to the issuance of building permits for each single-family dwelling. Just to show you a few photos, it's, you'll see the sign there, and there's trees kind of in the way for much of it, and it is a very hilly location. This is looking down the unimproved road from approximately end where the road improvements stop. It's hard to see, but way in the back, there is like a barrier saying the road is closed. There it is. Better view of the road and where the houses would be proposed to go. You'll see it drops down as it goes further on the property. And this is looking back up to the road from the end of the, by the barrier. There is a connection right here that is not, has not been improved as well. It would go into the next neighboring development, and I don't know, have any plans of making that connection in the near time future. And then this is in the center part of the subdivision where there's another lot. So, I'll bring it back to the map. Is there any questions?
I guess Kevin, what about coming off that South George Street into the middle? You were talking, those pictures were on that River Bluff Road, right?
Sure.
What about on that South George Street?
So, as I'm aware, there is an access easement through here, and it would be a possibility. Maybe you can ask the petitioner exactly where that easement is, but this, there is one parcel that would have to be accessed by South George because there is no other, doesn't reach the other street, the River Bluff.
Would it be possible to access all four of them from that, or later on?
I believe so, but it would have to be subject to the easements there.
Any other questions for him? Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward and state your name and address?
Good evening. Ryan Brower. Address is 1817 West River Bluff Drive in Brandon. So, yes, as far as the extending River Bluff Road, I have met with the county, and they actually advised extending that road to the turnaround for snow removal. So, I did go to the Split Rock Township meeting, and that went well. They were all in favor of that, so... Is there any other questions you guys have for me?
Not at this time, but we may call you back. Anyone here that raised their hand that would like to speak for this item, please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Denise Moriarty, 3100 Unique Place. First question is, where is the turnaround that you're discussing? This runs right behind our property, so we're of course extremely concerned about what you're going to be doing. Oh, okay. Where will the turnaround be, first of all?
It'll be at that roadblock.
Okay, why don't you ask your questions, and then we'll have him come forward again, okay?
Okay. Also, we'd like to know how many properties are going to be established? How much of the foliage and tree will be torn down, torn out? That's it?
Okay.
Okay. I may have more.
Okay. Anyone else care to speak to this item? Would you come forward, state your name and address, please?
I am Russ Sugandorn. I live in the orange houses in the pictures there, 8904 East 38th Street. My concern, I guess, some of my neighbors after I purchased the home realized that the county or township rather had abandoned those roads, which for the most part was fine. What we did is establish some barricades on those roads to avoid traffic from trying to get through an unapproved road and getting stuck. So, we have gone through a little bit of effort to keep that road closed and keep traffic out, and I'm fully free and able to open that road back up, but I would like to kind of do that in a controlled way, so that we kind of work together to make sure that traffic doesn't just haphazardly wander through that property and get stuck in my front yard again. I've had maintainers turn around in my backyard. I've had mail trucks come through my property because that road is not finished or connected, but they constantly try and come through anyway. So, until that road is fully approved and ready for traffic, I would like in some way just to kind of have an agreement to devise a way to control that traffic, so it's stopped until the time comes when they can be opened up and available for free flow.
My name's Paul Hess. I live at 2900 South River Bluff Road, the adjacent property to the north, right on River Bluff Road. I have a couple of concerns. One's the drainage out of that farm field that's just in the northwest corner. The township is supposed to be maintaining a culvert across River Bluff Road that goes about to the spot where they want to put the driveway in, and it drains that whole farm field down the ditch off of River Bluff Road into that creek. If they put a culvert and a driveway in that spot, that drainage is going to go straight through the bottom of my lot and ruin the bottom of my lot. So, if this goes through, we've got to have some kind of drainage control out of that field that goes down the ditch rather than the right-of-way easement there down to the creek instead of through my lot. My other concern is again the driveway locations, and I'm wondering about the height of the property since I like to enjoy my view, the height of the buildings and stuff on that side, because I see both of those houses going close to River Bluff Road with a nice view to the southeast. I'd like to have my view there, too. So, I think there needs to be some control on the height of the buildings that go up. I may have some more questions, too.
Is there anyone else? The petitioner would like to come forward again. Can you answer some of those questions for them?
I'll do my best, if you can refresh my memory of what was asked. So, just a little background. I'm the contractor, and I'm working on behalf of the landowner and their family. So, Bernie Shock bought this land, let's say, 20 years ago with the four housing eligibilities. So, answer number one, it has four housing eligibilities. One of them is built on already, so it has three additional ones, so there won't be more than three additional structures or houses. Let's see, what was the other one?
Location of the turnaround?
The location of the turnaround. As I mentioned, I went to the township meeting, met with them, got the approval to take down the barricades that were approved that the neighbors put up. And I know the road maintenance guys recommended taking them down and extending that to a spot that they could establish a turnaround spot. So, people coming down that road right now don't have to turn around in a driveway. They have an actual turnaround spot. So, what they recommended at that meeting was to take the roadblock that's there off of River Bluff Road and move it on that side street, the one that he was referencing, that one that cuts across his property. That way, that one is still blocked off. So, River Bluff Road is then open to that turnaround, but the other road is then, you just basically move that barricade to the other location.
Are you aware of the drainage over there, about any of that?
Yep, yep, and that was brought up, yeah. He brought that up at the township meeting as well. And it was my understanding, the agreement was they were going to redo that culvert when they established that road. And if you can see from the pictures that were taken, there's ditches there, but that culvert runs at an angle underneath that road, and I think it's plugged up. It needs to be redone, so...
Needs to be bigger, too.
I'm all for that. Yeah, and I think the township needs to, we need to just work with them and get that thing fixed. And then as far as blocking any water drainage, get that culvert fixed. If there is any approaches, we have to get a culvert permit for the township, so that we're not impeding water flow down that hill.
That might be removed.
Thank you. Bernie, they've lived there for 20 years, and they've spent 20 years planting trees out there. He is, he loves his trees, and he, we are actually, have in mind to move the trees that are there to different locations just to make the house space accessible, but we're going to leave as much as we can there.
And the height of the building?
I don't know what any codes are as far as ag land, as far as height of the building. I brought the house plan with me, and if you want to see it, you can, but it's a standard walkout ranch, normal height, normal roof line, as far as the one that's going to be adjacent to his property. So, we're looking at building in this corner right here, right there. You want to answer? Okay. Can he talk, he's, he would be the son of Bernie, who I would be actually building the house for.
Okay. If he goes forward and states his name and address, please.
Hi, thank you. Nathan Shock, currently at 4400 East 36th Street. And yes, my parents bought this land back in the early 90s. And to answer your question, the area that we are would not be accessible by South George Street. South George Street, if you look on this map, comes down the middle there, and then this property is two hills over. So, you can get to their house and the housing eligibility in the very southeast corner, but you can't, you wouldn't be able to get to ours.
I just didn't know how the topography was over there, you know?
Yeah.
When you look at a map, it's just like...
It's hard to see. Yeah, yeah, and I'm with you on the drainage. I mean, that's cut across our land now for as long as I can remember, and fills up a pond in there that's actually a little, that shouldn't be there. So, there are some, there are drainage issues lower on the property. On that, I mean, anything that affects you will affect us more because we're downhill from you, so we would like that to be addressed as well. And I think, you know, just to let you know, like I said, my parents purchased this back in the early 90s. We're planning to build on that very far west corner to care for my parents as they age. And my dad, originally, I helped him plant most of those trees, including in this very northwest corner. And one of the things we told Ryan, our builder, is we want to move that house back, so we remove as few of the trees as possible, so... Any other questions?
I guess not at this time.
All right, thank you.
Any other people in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Guess I'll close the floor, then. The commissioners?
I guess to me, I think he's done his homework. He's talked to the township. I guess the people he needs to talk to, and I guess they give him the go-ahead. I think it might improve the drainage over there, if that's what they're worried about. I'm putting new culverts in. I'm sure that would help out a lot over there, so...
Is that a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve a conditional use permit 19-46 on the county side. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on the county side.
Motion to approve with the stated conditions?
Correct.
Second that.
Second with the stated conditions. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Thank you. We'll move on to item number three under the regular agenda, the rezoning of 19-07 to rezone from rural residential district to the C commercial district on the property legally described as lots 1, 2, and 18, block 1, Split Rock Heights addition, Section 19, Township 101 North, Range 48 West. Petitioner is Ryan Tyzdal, and property owner is Arlene Rosenbuehle Living Trust, 1704 1706, South Potter House Road, and 1610 East 26th Street. That is east Sioux Falls. Scott?
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Planning Director, and tonight is a public hearing on a rezoning request as you described to rezone property from rural residential to C commercial. The rezoning request consists of three lots, which consists of approximately 1.65 acres, and this property is located at the intersection of 26th Street and Highway 100 or South Potter House Road, and I'm sure many of us have driven by it in the past. It's now shown on the map for you. There is an existing single-family residence and an existing detached garage. The larger lot, which is on the east of, located to the east, as you can see, there's a larger lot. That lot is vacant. The property to the south, to the east, or sorry, west, so the property to the south and to the west has already been annexed into the city, so this property basically abuts the city on two sides. So, this is an interesting rezoning request because it would stand to logic or stand to reason that the best use for this property really is for commercial because it is on a heavily trafficked intersection. As I indicated in my staff report, I think the average ADT there is about 7,000 trips per day. That's relatively, you know, significant. There's an existing commercial development directly to the south in the city. So, the request was routed to the city. We worked jointly on these things, and the city provided some very detailed comments, which I've included in your staff report. And they laid out a number of issues that they felt precluded or indicated that at this time, the property was not suitable for rezoning because there was a need for a traffic impact study, a traffic analysis. There was, the property is adjacent to the city and therefore could easily be hooked up to sanitary sewer and water, which would be a benefit for the commercial development, which probably will occur there. They also had some issues, let's see, traffic study, and the city could also better address the possible land use, future land use of that site. In the county, we only have one commercial zoning district, the C commercial district, and in the city, there are a number of zoning districts that may be better suited to this property, like office commercial, other districts that you have that might be more suitable for the type of commercial development that is probably going to occur there. So, given that, yes, we feel the land use is appropriate, but it's not appropriate at this time to be zoned commercial in the joint area. The recommendation is a recommendation of denial with the applicant being directed to annex this property into the city at the time commercial development is needed or is, when the property is ready to be developed. So, I do have a couple pictures and some slides that I took. So, I do have a couple pictures and some slides that I took. So, once again, this shows you, the house is located on this lot. The detached garage is located here, and then this larger lot is empty. The, the, the property does, this property does not have direct access onto Highway one hundred. It has, there's a service road on, located on the east side of Highway one, one hundred, and there's a cul-de-sac, you can see that here. Or you can come off East Twenty-Sixth Street. And the approach is located relatively close to the intersection, closer than I think the highway standards and road standards would like to see, and that is one of the issues that needs to be addressed once that is annexed into the city, is the, the access management and the access into the property. And it's likely that, given the, the, the relatively short distance that this, these, both of these lots represent to the intersection, there may need to be some unique access issues that are discussed with that property. So, this is, you know, basically, you can see, this is standing across the street on highway, on Twenty-Sixth Street. Here's the house, here's the detached residence, you can see that cul-de-sac road here. And in addition, there's a large berm, if you're familiar with Highway one hundred, a, a berm that is located between the service road and Highway one hundred. This is the empty lot, this is looking east down highway, down Twenty-Sixth Street, and this is the major intersection. And basically, I'm standing, or I'm across the, from this approach. So, it'll give you an idea of how far or how close it relatively is to the intersection. So, I'd be glad to answer any question, I know the applicant's here, I've had some discussion with him, and I've had some discussion with neighbors, there may be some neighbors that are here as well. I'd be, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Chair, if, let's say hypothetically, the Twenty-Sixth Street ingress is closed off, what would the access to that property be then, just the service road?
Probably, but that is really going to be, I don't know if I can answer that, because it really is gonna, it's, it is likely going to be a public works, a city engineering issue to address, because it's likely that if it was annexed, it would be addressed through the city. And the applicant may need to work with the township, because as you can see, part of this service road is, you know, you can see the cul-de-sac here, the bulb of the cul-de-sac, and part of that's in the city, is in the city limits, and part of that access road appears to be a township road, so.
And just for clarification for people in the audience, once the property is annexed, those items are, that's when those items are addressed.
Yes, once the, once they annex the property into the city, and they requested a rezoning through the city, then it's my understanding, and you may wanna ask the city planner to verify that, but that would likely then trigger a traffic analysis, maybe a traffic study, an impact study on land use, landscaping requirements, access management points onto, on either Twenty-Sixth Street or the service road.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions for Scott?
How close are they to be in annex, I mean, how, what's the closest?
Well, you know, the city, it's typically, the city doesn't, isn't in the position of doing forced annexation, and that's all sort of development-driven, so it would be likely that that would be a request that would come from the property owner to annex them, so I don't think, I don't know if there's a, you know, a timeframe that they say we want this annexed by.
So, is the land to the north, is that already annexed?
No, if you go back here, we can look at this. So, the, I, I guess, depending on what you mean exactly north, and this is Split Rock Heights subdivision, so that, all of those residential, that residential area is not annexed into the city. But if you go north, on the other side is Dolly Farms and Rosa Park Elementary, and all of that development that's occurring to the north. And, and as you're aware, in the city, there is extensive residential development occurring to the south of this.
Any other questions for him? Thanks Scott. Is a petitioner here, will you please come forward and state your name and address, please?
Hi, Ryan Tisdall, twenty-five seventy-one West Lake Drive.
You have any questions for him?
We had, I, I would echo that it is a unique request, unique rezoning, not your typical run-of-the-mill. We had a neighborhood meeting last week, we had five neighbors show up. Really more inquisitive than anything, anytime many neighbors get a rezoning noticed, they wanna know kinda what the plan is. And I walked them through, at, at current time, the house is vacant, and the current owner, their intent is to rezone it for future development. There is no plan at the current time, so I, there's no exhibit saying this is the building that's gonna go there, this is the exact user that it's gonna be. Right now, they've just, they've engaged me, asking for my assistance to kinda shepherd them through the process of rezoning it for the purposes of development, or for sale for development. They, in the neighborhood meeting, I explained to, to the people there that upon, once somebody buys it, or it's to be developed, there, there are obviously several other things, drainage, access, traffic impact studies, all those items that we would need to work, or actually the buyer would need to work with the city on. At this point in time, the property owner is only asking for a zoning, they're only applying for a rezoning there with the expectation that there are gonna be several other items that will need to be addressed prior to the actual building on the lot. You know, I, I guess, we're approaching it in the spirit of the planning commission, you know, for years, saying we are a land use decision-making body, we're not here to, you know, approve a site plan, or approve an access point, or approve a drainage plan. We're here to talk about, does this zoning classification make sense on this piece of land? And, you know, on, on this hard corner, you know, the land to the east of it is owned by Avera, and I've heard representatives of Avera say that their intent is to build a clinic there and break ground in the next eighteen to twenty-four months. There's a Casey's on, currently under construction right next to that. There's a commercial, commercial development to the south of it, that is about two-thirds of the way built out. And the two hundred acres that sits kitty-corner across this intersection, that was listed about a month ago, and we're in the process of putting that on the market. And that hard corner is also zoned commercial, with a likely potential user on that corner being a hotel. So, you know, in the very foreseeable future, this corner is gonna look far different than it does today. And, you know, a couple people raised a question to me, well, who, who would wanna live on that corner with all that other activity that maybe isn't the most conducive to a single-family home? So, that's where the, the current owner of the land felt that it probably made the most sense to rezone it to commercial. Have spoke a few times with the city, and have met with them a couple times in person to talk about, you know, kinda what the best path forward is for both the property owner, as well as the city, as well as the neighbors. With the, this, the owner has been, they're, they've kinda put out there that they would really be very agreeable to something in the nature of a pre-annexation agreement, so at such time, it would be sold and developed that they would, you know, would be annexed at that time. The city has kinda raised a couple issues with that, and, which was a little surprising, cuz on a, another piece of land that I'm working on, just to the north of this, just to the east of Highway one hundred, on Arrowhead Parkway, the city presented a pre-annexation agreement as really a solution in a very similar case. So, I was kinda surprised when the city raised questions if a pre-annexation agreement would work here. But the, the owner isn't necessarily opposed to annexing it in the least. What they're trying to avoid is, if it were to be annexed today, it really triggers, according to Albert in Planning, about fourteen hundred dollars in additional taxes and fees per year. And they're not opposed to annexing it, however, they don't wanna pay those fees until such time that those services would actually be utilized, such as, you know, utilities and the hookups. So, I guess it's, again, kind of a unique scenario where the, the owner is not opposed to annexing it at all. However, they just don't wanna incur those added expenses, in the meantime, really, until it is developed. That kinda paints the picture a little bit.
Scott?
Ryan's correct, this, it's, it's a land use decision, but I also wanted to explain and make sure that we're all clear that, that this is also a regulatory decision, and should this be rezoned in the county, in the joint area, once that, the day that becomes effective, if they came to my office and asked to build a strip mall, I would have to issue them the permit upon the proper review, which would not necessarily include the access management and the traffic study, because that's not a requirement of our building code. So, my concern is, if we rezone this to commercial, which I think is an appropriate land use, it has every right under the zoning ordinance for the C Commercial Zoning District. So, just, just throw that out there.
So, I guess I'm asking, asking this body to make a decision on what's the best path forward. We're very open to some sort of approval with a condition. I think at times, the, the planning commissioner, the council has offered that up as maybe a compromise. So, I guess I'm open to any questions, and really looking for guidance as the, the best path. In my experience, you know, I sell commercial real estate for a living, and in my experience, it's very, very difficult to engage a commercial user without the zoning in place. So, I, I realize it's a little bit of the chicken and the egg, but we really need the zoning to engage the, the right buyer for this parcel. And, you know, very open to, you know, whoever that buyer and developer is, that there's some condition that they would need to work with the city for a, you know, if there's a tra, traffic impact study needed, or, you know, an access plan, drainage plan, you know, there, you know, all, everything that comes with developing a piece of property of this nature. Nobody from the seller's end is really arguing with that, it's just a matter of timing. And I guess my question would be, could this body, or the council, could they put a condition in place? Really that it's, in certain cases, we've seen zoning, you know, with kind of an asterisk, special conditions apply. There's a few of those out there, could this be another one of those cases where, you know, yes, we approve commercial zoning, however, you know, here's, you know, some conditions that need to be met before it can be developed. So, really looking for guidance and open to what the planning department has for insight, as the, for the best, best path forward.
Say, Ryan, I got a question for you while you're here. I'm not suggesting that a mutual access agreement with the property owners to the east would be the best idea, because I get concerned that there's conflicting uses there as far as residential and commercial goes, but has that been a conversation with those property owners to the east thus far?
It has not been a conversation at this time. I do think that it could be very likely in the future that, you know, the, the ideal access would be for these three parcels and the two parcels to the east of them, long-term, to all really kinda be grouped together as commercial, take access off of Schaefer Drive and, or Schaefer Avenue, sorry. With, my understanding is there is a proposed future stoplight at Schaefer and Twenty-Sixth. So, it, it really would kinda mirror the, the Silver Maple Development just to the south of it, where there's a number of office and commercial users. So, I think long-term, that's a very, a very viable access plan. In the, until such time that those two properties to the east would be redeveloped, you know, I think there may need to be some sort of temporary access to Twenty-Sixth, with an understanding that that could change in the future. I've seen some access permits come on engineering that say, you know, this is what the access is today, this could change to X, X, and X in the future if, if and when these other properties redevelop. Nobody's advocating to take any access down Powderhouse Road and that cul-de-sac. I don't think it'd be very appropriate to put commercial traffic on that road. And I don't think any commercial user would really be vying for that. I think, you know, coming off of, you know, something temporary on Twenty-Sixth Street and long-term off Schaefer, really would be ideal. But, you know, what we're trying to avoid is this hard corner, property owner being held, you know, I hate to say held hostage, but, you know, don't want them to be held up purely because of what their neighbors wanna do. When really, forever is a long time, and you look at the land uses around here, this neighborhood, you know, fifty years from now, you know, do you think it's still probably a single-family? Or do you think kinda over time, it, you know, potentially rezones itself into commercial, multifamily, mixed uses? When you look at, you know, a lot of the activity along Highway one hundred, you know, Highway one hundred has ten thousand cars a day today. The HTR's traffic models show that when it connects Interstate ninety next year, they expect that number to triple overnight to over thirty thousand cars a day, and that wouldn't include anything on Twenty-Sixth Street itself. So, this corridor really is, you know, in the near term, gonna really, the character of it's gonna change a lot into a very heavy commercial corridor from north to south. You know, we're already seeing it across the street with Avera and Capital Card Services to the north of that. I mean, when you start talking, you got a two-story call center going across the street. So, I mean, we, I don't think anyone really disputes that commercial zoning makes sense here. We just maybe need to figure out the best path to get from A to B, to, to make it work for all parties involved.
Any other questions for him?
And I'm, you know, if some of the neighbors have questions that they'd like me to address, I'm certainly happy to do that.
We'll bring you back up if.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else from the audience like to speak to?
Albert Schmidt, St. Sioux Falls Planning Office, just a quick, little comments for you, just to kinda give you a little brief history on what's going on here, or brief kinda comments. So, the St. Sioux Falls planning staff is recommending denial of this rezoning request, not because it's a request to rezone to commercial, but rather because it's a request to rezone commercial right now. Rezoning to commercial at this point would cause issues, because it may give the appearance that the property's ready to be redeveloped, when in fact, due to federal requirements with Veterans Parkway, no commercial access can be allowed per, permanent or temporary onto Twenty-Sixth Street before this South Schaefer Drive. In addition, any rezoning to commercial at this point could put some potential buyers in the misunderstanding that the property was ready to be developed, when in fact, redevelopment still needs annexation, connection to city sewer, connection to city water, and access onto South Schaefer Drive. It may also be in developed, need, or include the need for roadway improvements on South Schaefer Drive, roadway improvements on East, East Twenty-Sixth Streets, intersection improvements at East Twenty-Sixth Street and South Schaefer Drive, road improvements at South Powderhouse Road. Those, all four of those things could be, depending on what kinda uses wanna go on this location, via a, via a tra, traffic study, could be required to be done for that redevelopment as well. So, based on the adopted comprehensive plan for St. Sioux Falls, commercial rezoning does make sense at this corner, but based on the current neighborhood conditions, this property needs other properties to develop, either with it or before it, before it makes sense for a rezone. A recommendation of denial of rezoning to commercial is an essential recommendation to show that rezoning property before having access plan in place is premature. Furthermore, staff has concerns that with commercial access going through residential neighborhood, we just need to work on those, those concerns and those issues. Thank you for your consideration and time. I'll take any questions you may have.
I have a question for you, Albert.
Yeah.
In the letter that you wrote to Scott here, it says when Veterans Parkway was constructed, it was agreed with the property owner to close the connection to Twenty-Sixth Street and cul-de-sac off of Powderhouse Road, which is what exists there today. If that's the case, and that was the agreement, there's effectively no access to the property, and it's entirely is that correct? Veterans Parkway is constructed, and those are still there.
Yeah, so, from my understanding, engineering talked directly with all these property owners along when that process was going on. The previous property owner, who no longer has passed away, so it's moved on to a different generation, indicated there wouldn't be any development at that, under their side of it, so that's why those kinda conditions got put in place for that property, to kind of lock in those, those future accesses, or what kind of access they would have in the future, and why we didn't have any, or long-term plan for access developed at that time. Whereas now, we need to work with multiple property owners to actually determine what that long-term access plan should be, and what makes sense for the neighborhood. Is that? Is that?
It does. Are they actual conditions on the property or are they verbal conversations?
I believe it's more verbal conversations. But with the St. Louis Falls, having annexed 26th Street, uh, that any access is on that street, uh, need to go through and get approval from the St. Louis Falls for any new ones on there. And typically, for us, any reuse of a property would mean a new evaluation of that access. And if that's proper or if it needs to be redone, typically residential access to commercial access would mean a major redo.
And I, I don't, Mr. Chair, sorry. I, I don't think that that letter intended to me that there's not going to be access to this property. I just think it's very preliminary prior to being able to figure out what that access means, just like you said. Correct?
I think, I believe so. I mean, we could definitely get into further detail at the, um, city council meetings with Shannon Austin with her traffic engineering to definitely bring those real fine details out.
Any other questions for him?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience care to address this item? Please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. Um, my name is Mike Banworth, 1605 Schaefer Drive. And our property is, um, just behind or to the north of what would be the vacant lot, um, that's shown there. And, um, the questions or concerns I would have, maybe are, are relevant or not, given the, the concerns that have already been raised. But as a, as a property owner behind there, um, and I compare it to other development that goes on, I've, I wasn't able to attend the neighborhood meeting, but I did talk to Ryan and Scott and had visited with some neighbors, um, with regard to this as well. Is, when you, when you look at the zoning that's being discussed or considered here and treating it as commercial, in this situation, then you've got commercial zoning and right next to it, single-family residential. And so my concern with that is, I mean, I understand we're not starting with bare land where you could have a transition from here to here to here and all the various uses. So it, it is a unique piece of property. But now you've got all these truly single-family residential properties right there that, as was mentioned, if it's zoned commercial, commercial can go right in there. And so what type of transition or buffer is available there for all the properties or houses that are behind it? Again, thinking, thinking long-term, it still could be commercial right on that corner, but a lot of residences right, right behind it there. I also recognize to the south, that is zoned commercial, but that development that's gone in there is primarily office. And it really lends itself very well to that corner. And I just throw that out from the standpoint of, does that somehow complement? And maybe even, even office may be a use for this land. But again, by, by having it commercial at this point, it throws you into that situation of commercial right next to single-family residential. So those are my thoughts and concerns as a, as I have the property adjacent to that. And just wanted to present that for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience care to address this item? Guess I'll close the floor then. Commissioners?
Ma'am Chair. Um, you know, I look at this, you know, and, uh, listening to Mike as well, um, think that maybe at this point, there's more questions than answers. Uh, so at this point, it may be a little preliminary. Now, do I agree that maybe a commercial application, this, you know, space is probably appropriate? I don't know that as the county side, I'd be prepared to approve it. Um, just for the fact that, again, with the city, there are so many different classifications of commercial. And there's so many, well, I'm understanding problems with access that wouldn't be addressed by the county either, that, um, I think that the request for annexation needs to go in. I understand that there's some fees that they're trying to avoid. But I think that's probably the most appropriate way to, um, vet all the problems. So I guess I'd make a motion to deny.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to deny rezoning, uh, 19 dash O2 to re, to rezone from rural residential to C Commercial District. All those in favor of the den, denial?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. City side?
City.
Move to approve for discussion?
Second.
Motion and a second for discussion.
Well, I, I understand a lot of the city's concerns here. I have some of the same concerns. Um, you know, access to this is difficult in the current condition. Uh, this intersection wasn't designed on that side to function in this way. And, uh, annexing it too soon, I agree, is difficult to anticipate all those things that are going to happen. So I'm actually opposed to this. But as we typically do, I will vote nay rather than, uh, moving to deny.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
There's the old business. Any business? Any motion of jury? So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes on the county side.
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?